Supervisors, if you could please mark yourselves present, then we can get started shortly. Supervisor Benke and Medsker, could you please mark yourselves present? Thank you, and I will call this meeting of the committee of the whole to order. Role call is going around. It looks like we have 22 members present and hopefully some more arriving. The first item up for action would be approval of our January 16th, 2024 minutes. Motion by Supervisor Sikowitz, second by Supervisor Benke. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? And the minutes are approved. So I do notice there we have some people in the audience. Welcome. Thank you for coming to this meeting. So what the meeting is going to look like is we're going to have a presentation by the county executive on the 2023 and the 2024 budget. Supervisors, if you would refrain from asking questions during the presentation, and then the county executive will let us know when he's willing to, ready to accept questions. Questions would be coming from the county board members only. There's no public input at this time. If you are interested in speaking on this topic or any other, we invite you to public input at any of our regular monthly meetings. With that, Bob, if you'd like to join us up at the front?
One, two, test. Good. Thank you. Thanks for coming. I wanted to share the budget issue with the county board. It started in February, Connecticut. At the last meeting of the Human Services Board in February, we were told that the... I think there's enough. Oops. I think that was enough. Pardon? Do you have enough? Test one, two. Okay. One more? I've got some here. Excuse me. Anyway, the Human Services Board met in February, last week of February, and it was reported that the budget had a deficit for $400,000. Now, that's not a big issue because we have a lot of revenues coming in late in March, and I didn't have any cause of concern about that because that's a usual thing. Three weeks later, I was called over to the Human Services Building, and they told me that the budget deficit was $2.5 million. That was a surprise to me, but I was alarmed, of course. And the first thing we did was study the 2024 budget because the 2024 budget was built on the 2023 budget. And little did I discover early on when we I looked at the 2024 budget, there was a defect in the budgeting so that we had $1,500,000 of deficit from day one. And so we had a estimate that we would have $3.5 million of deficit in 2024. So we were faced with two deficits, two years in a row. 2023 was $2.5 million. 2024 was $3.5 million. So I have a deficit to make up of $6 million. That's even though the Human Services budget is a big budget. It's more than $30 million. That's a pretty big deficit to manage, and I wanted to share my embarrassment with the county board. So I met with the chairman, the Finance Committee Chairman, the Human Services Committee Chairman, the First Vice Chairman, Kevin Benke, and Jim Falcosi, the Second Vice Chairman. And we thought, and also I met with a couple of people, a couple of members who came into my office curious as to what this problem was. I wanted to share it with the board as quickly as possible for the sake of transparency. It's on me, my accountability, but you have to make some decisions in this year to help me fix it. And we'll talk about two options that will fix this problem financially. It will be a two-year fix, and you can follow me, follow along on the handout I've given you, or I've got the same information up here that I will work through. So we've got a $6 million deficit. And we looked at the levy that we had in 2023 and compared it to the levy that we had in 2024. This is the general fund. The general fund is pretty good. Usually, it gives us a surplus of more than $500,000 or more. Several years ago, we had a big surplus. We don't have a surplus near that number this year. I think it's about $100,000 or $150,000 surplus in the general fund. The Highway Committee or the Highway Department had a good year, and we have more than $800,000 of surplus generated in the Highway Committee. So we don't have to worry about that either because that's on a pretty good path. The Death Service Fund is fixed. The Human Services Fund, we budgeted, we levied nearly $6 million. And we should have levied more, and that's my fault. I aggressively budgeted it each year, and in the past, we've had big surpluses in the Human Services Department. But looking back, we're short by this amount of money, $2.5 million in 2023. In 2024, we had a problem because of the defect in the budget planning. The wrong entry was made, and there we start out with a $1,500,000 deficit from day one. And it is the Human Services budget follows the 2023 budget pretty much. So we can estimate that it will generate almost $3.5 million of deficit in 2024. So solving this two-year problem will take two years. If we look at the 2025 budget and look at what we would need to have a balanced budget, we can see $1 million in the general fund, very little in the Highway Fund because we've got a good program there, $100,000. The Death Service Fund is peaking at this level, $3.7 million. So we have to budget $1.2 million this next year in 2025, and we've got to fill up this gap in the HSD budget by $3,500,000. So that's almost a total of almost $6 million that we have to add to our revenues. And we'll talk about where we can get the money one way or another, but it's a big lift. We talked about the program having a two-year fix because we can't get this much money in the first year. So the second of the two years, in 2026, we're conservatively budgeting another $2.4 million on the levy, and then have a balanced budget going forward. So we'll talk about how we get the revenues in a minute. But in the past, we have a couple of reserves. We've got money left over from the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, $1.5 million to $2.5 million. It's uncertain now, but it's in that range. And the opioid fund from the lawsuits that we get money from various providers or manufacturers of opioid things, we have $950,000 right now. We're scheduled to get a couple of hundred thousand dollars the remainder of this year and a fair amount for the next 10 years, a couple of hundred thousand dollars each year. So we, and the opioid fund gives the Human Services Department $300,000 in year 2024, $250,000 in year '23. So we've got to do that in these years too because if we don't do that, we'll have a larger deficit that we have to fill. So the the two proposals or two options I want to talk about are to lift the property tax this next year by almost 30%. That will generate $9,750,000, and we'll talk about that in a minute. And it will, 30% is $120 on a $100,000 piece of property. Or we can look at the sales tax, and that the estimate for the sales tax was loosely done 2022, excuse me, 2020 or 2019, and the range is $7.5 million to $9 million. I think it's closer to $9 million, but we that's the range we've talked about in the meantime, in the past, and I wanted to give you a conservative estimate on that. So now the two options are basically to fill the need with the sales tax or fill the need with the property tax. They come out basically the same after two years. If we do it with the property tax, we have a deficit of $6 million. We'll devote $2 million from the opioid and ARPA funds, and that gives us $4 million at the end of 2024. We'll raise $9,750,000 with the property tax. We'll spend $5.8 million on the levy, and we'll have a deficit of $50,000 at the end of 2025. In 2026, we'll raise the property tax a nominal amount, 3%. We'll have this raise from last year, $9,750,000. The levy will add these two numbers together because that will raise the levy, and we'll have about, at the end of 2026, $247,500, excuse me, excuse me, $2,475,000, and that will be at the end of 2026. That's the property tax. If we choose this option, the sales tax, again, will start out with $6 million. We'll devote $2 million from the ARPA fund. We'll have $4 million at the end, a deficit at the end of 2024. And then we'll raise the property tax a nominal amount, 3% or less. And of course, the net new construction figures into that, so that's really a nominal amount. We'll devote the $8,500,000 in the sales tax. And I think for 2025, compared to the estimates that we last saw five years ago, I think that's a conservative number. We'll apply, we'll have the levy by $5,800,000. And at the end of 2025, we'll have a deficit of $325,000. For '26, we'll do the same thing. The raise in 2026 for the property tax will be the same thing. We'll raise it again a nominal amount, excuse me, $975,000. And then the sales tax will grow to $9 million. And we'll, the levy will be these two numbers combined, and we'll have $2,425,000 left over on this program. So it's a conservative estimate. It's a big property tax or big sales tax number, but basically, we've got to fix the problem. You could say what causes this, and I would say in ascending order, inflation, demand, demand for services in the Human Services Department. We, on page one of this handout, we listed the expenditures for the last four years and noticed how they are growing by leaps and bounds. And basically, that's all required service that we have to offer. The we had some errors in our budget, and that complicates things. And that's my responsibility. But we had that error in the budget for $1.5 million. We have to eat it because we didn't know it when the budget was passed. And I would say the bad management from the top, and that's me. I thought we were on a good track, but I didn't realize soon enough how we were not on a good track. And that's my responsibility. So basically, I've laid out two options. And of course, you remember, of course, what we've talked about on the sales tax. And in this vein, I will not veto the sales tax if the county board decides to go with option two. I would recommend the property tax, but I won't veto and won't stand in the way of the sales tax. And I think I'm ready for questions. Any questions? Please.
If you could just mark on your microphone too, that way I can get your microphone turned on for you.
Got it? No. John? Testing. One, two? Well, that's a good question. I think this is very conservative. I didn't want to get caught in this explanation in the two-year plan to fix the budget, but I think it's no. But we've got to get the revenues in line with the human service activity. And that's my fault in the past, but I think that will be enough for the future and I think will add to this nominally in the future years. But we have to add this big number in 2025 because we've been delinquent with that.
Is six budgeting process?
The deficit of $6 million is baked in. Going forward, I think not, it's not baked in. We are examining the budget daily, and I think this number, the $3.5 million, will do it for 2025 and will get on a sound footing. So it's not baked in, and I think it will be a one-off.
So the $32 million that we have in 2023, you're not anticipating that number going up in 2025?
A little bit, but again, the Human Services budget is very complicated and complex. A lot of the funding happens a year late. So we expanded the Human Services Department in the last three years, and a lot of funded positions are partially funded in the first year and fully funded in the next year. When we, when we don't expand the Human Services Department anymore or anymore in the future and keep it at that level, we'll catch up to the delay in the reimbursement from the state and federal amounts. And that's a big, a big product of the Human Services budget. And that's extremely I've spent a lot of time in the past five weeks studying and analyzing, and it's very complicated. And because we have state programs, we have federal programs, we have state-federal programs, we have grants, and they're all a little bit different, and it gets very confusing. We had retirements in the financial people in Human Services, one at the end of 2023, excuse me, 2022, and one at the end of 2023. And I don't want to blame them, but we didn't pick up all the information on a timely basis that they had in their experience. And maybe that's my fault too because we, I thought, we thought it was going along fine, and not so fine. But in the meantime, to answer your question, I think no, it's not baked into the 2025 budget.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. So a couple comments and a couple questions here. First thing is I want to say thank you to the fellow supervisors that voted down that $45 million loan on this last session because this would be exactly what I was talking about, about inflation, along with the consequences to the mandates and lockdowns. So thank you to my fellow supervisors who, who voted that down with me. My question would be, is, didn't we see any red flags in any of the committees over the last year or so? Because through this process, we've added employees, we bought buildings. Like, when did we first realize that there was problems? And at what level did we realize that?
Recently. And we added most of the positions in the Human Services Department. And if you see on the first page in the bottom, we had big surpluses in the 2020 and 2021. And we flipped over in 2022. And that was the first sign of, of a change. And in, in my instance, I thought we would return to the surplus because of my experience in the past years. But I was wrong. And in, in the other departments, we've had good experience, pretty much. It's getting closer to even. But we had a reasonable surplus in 2022 and a marginal surplus in 2023 in the general fund. And we had a, a, not a huge surplus, but a definitive surplus in the highway department too. So if you exclude Human Services from the other parts of the budget, I would say we're, we're sailing along. But the Human Services Department threatens to momentarily sink us because the, the, the demand and the budget were so out of whack. And that's, that's on me.
Bob, I guess I just, and I think the general public is going to ask the question, from 2020 to 2023, we, we jumped an expenditure of $10 million.
Right.
But yet we levied the same amount from '23 to '24. No one in, within the Finance Department or the Human Service Department recognized that the dollars coming in didn't match the $10 million that we expended differently from 2020 to 2023.
And that's on me because I'm the supervisor of all of those. So we recognized that a problem was in 2022, but we thought it would rectify itself and it didn't. And again, that's on me.
Yes, one thing I just want to make clear that you didn't say what the percentage of sales tax was going to be. Is that a half a percent? Like, was always?
Well, we only have a, a half a percent. It's either a half a percent or not.
Okay.
We, we can't choose a different number.
Okay. Then one other question I have. I realize you're, you're taking the blame for this. And I guess what I don't, guess I don't understand is, for this to get so far out of hand, I think there should be some other accountability somewhere. And do you see any need for any type of independent type audit so that we can get, actually get to the bottom of this? I mean, we have the same people involved and they're trying to fix it. And I don't know that that's a good idea.
That's a good point. We have an independent auditing, auditing firm working with us and they uncovered a part of this problem anyway. So we have an independent auditor. They will be here probably in September, maybe August, but September, I think, and presenting the, the total financial reports for Manitowoc County in 2023. They're still working. We met with them a couple of times last week and they see it as we see it.
So that's the same auditing firm that we've had the whole time?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
And, and they, they aren't responsible for making decisions. They just are responsible for getting the books straight that, according to governmental accounting principles so you can compare them with any report of any county or municipality. So they just report, they don't consult. But they do some consulting when they talk about individual items. But they don't, we don't hire them to consult for us.
Thank you, Chairman Martel. So one of the thoughts that is very concerning among many, but I have a lot of townships asking me, you know, what are they going to do? Like, funding's low everywhere. And with this format, it's almost like we're in a hole trying to dig out. But I don't think it accounts for any of the additional inflation and expenses that were going to occur on top of this. Like, general fund type stuff, highway stuff, operational expenses, you know? Like, I don't see where it accounts for that type of stuff.
Well, that's a good point. But the highway department, in particular, has had a pretty good run. And I think they're managing their expenses pretty well. The general fund, we've had surpluses every year. And we have a small one this year, smaller than I would like. But we're not running into that. But I, I, I get your point. And when I did this calculation, I wanted to make it very conservative. I think we'll beat these numbers, but I can't figure on that right now. And I, and that's basically all I can do today in, in monitor and, and, and manage it for the budget in 2020, four, five, and six.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question on the property tax option. You mentioned a 30% property tax in 2025 and a 3% property tax in 2026. Is that cumulative? So in 2026, you'd be looking at 33% over 2024?
Yes, yes. So that is added on in, in the second year. Right.
And that 33% obviously stays. It maintains at that point. It doesn't go away.
Right. And you could, that would be the baseline and you could add or subtract to that in the next year.
Sure.
But yeah, basically right.
Okay.
Exactly right.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. I, I'd like to say thank you for presenting two options that can potentially, you know, solve the problem once it's addressed. But before we even get to that, I, I just can't swallow the understanding of that this hasn't come up in any financial committee meetings whatsoever. And it's gotten this bad and you're telling me now, today, $6 million is our problem. There, there's, there's no indication in my mind logically that this couldn't have been foreseen by some committee, some supervisors in the past. And, and I will not accept that as you saying you're taking responsibility alone. So my question being to you, sir, is what are we going to do in a systematic approach to make sure this never happens again to the taxpayers of Manitowoc County?
Well, I don't, I don't know about that. But I think it, it's a combination of problems that make one problem. We, if, if we, we were just dealing with the first year, the 2023, that would be a little bit more manageable. But when we add to that, the, the error in, in the budget that sinks us $1.5 million right away, that accumulates the problem. I can't tell you that we won't have a mistake ever more. I can't tell you that.
Do we have any systems and approach in, in, in place right now to actually, in the committee structure that we have right now, to see when we have a shortfall of, of 1.5 million? Because I've asked other supervisors if this has been brought up in last year's meetings and they said no. So that's what's so disheartening to me to understand how we've jumped from no conversation to a $6 million deficit that we have to solve with a sales tax or a property tax increase of 30%?
It's frustrating to me too. And I understand that. I, I accept your criticism because it did come up. And again, we had a couple of big budget surpluses in the Human Services Department in recent years. And I expected that to be back again. And I didn't have any discernible information that we were in trouble until March.
Okay. So the highway department, you, you like to, you know, we, we speak about how fiscally responsible they've been and I'm very proud that you say that. However, do we have a system for the Human Services Department now that they actually have a budget that they're following? Or is it just been continuing budgets that continue to add on and add on? That's what I'm asking.
Well, the budget that will be in, in this year will have to follow it and will have to, we know that it will have a huge deficit. In the next year, we, we can fix the budget at the beginning and, and fix it rightly so. But in the meantime, we've got to deal with
Where we're at.
With, with reality. And I'm not happy about it, but I'm, I'm, that's on me.
Well, I understand that, but it doesn't have to only be on you. If we can have a system that we can see this stuff coming, we can make adjustments slowly as a team. That's what I'm trying to say.
Again, the Human Services budget is extremely complicated because the, the revenues come in in a haphazard way, way late, in, in three or four months behind. And we, it's, it's difficult. And, and I've said, I've said that a couple of times before and I, I won't say it two months, many times. But the, the demand is excessive too. And we, we have to give those services. We can't, we can't neglect the services and it, it gets out of balance. And we'll have to find a way in the meantime, in this year, to have better information in a relatively good time and not late. And we'll do that for the rest of the year. And we'll, we can do better. But you're, you're right.
Thank you.
All right, try to keep your voices down. The microphones are picking it up and it's covering up the voice of the county executive and the supervisors asking questions. Supervisor Hanson.
Mr. Chair, Bob, you said $120 per $100,000 with a 30% tax increase?
$120 per $100,000.
Do we have any idea how much a household may spend in a sales tax for a year?
Well, if you add up $8,500,000 and you think about 85 or 82, 82,000 people in the county, you can basically, one person, $100 on sales tax, basically. Now that, that will be all over the map because people, people will spend more money or less money. But it averages out to $100, basically.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've said before, we look at the taxpayer as an unlimited resource. This is a county problem. So I'd like for us to at least consider a solution that would deal with an evaluation of the services that the county provides across the board and see what kind of money we can cut back on that. Related to that is, are all services in Human Services mandated by the state? Or are there some that we can cut back on?
Yes, they're mandated by the state, basically. A very, you could carve on the edges very reluctantly, but basically there, we, we have the responsibility to provide foster care, child protective services, mental health, et cetera, et cetera. And basically, that's all required.
So ultimately, if I extrapolate this out, eventually, the taxpayer will have no discretionary income as we continue to provide more and more and more government services?
Well, you can make that assumption, but I, I don't think it's realistic. Look, we, we have a change in culture in the last five years in Manitowoc County and all around. Five years ago, we had 40 or 45 people in foster care. Now we have 130 or 140 people in foster care. We have mental health services. We have group homes for, for juveniles, children. We have to provide all those services. And we can look at each individual program. And we'll look at that and we'll look at that together on the Human Services Committee. But by and large, I will tell you that we don't have a realistic opportunity to make much cuts in the Human Services Department.
Well, that, that's my point. Because none of this stuff is going to lessen opioid addictions and welfare and, or the foster care programs, the abuse to people, alcoholism, et cetera, is on the increase. And the people picking up the tab for that is the taxpayer. And that, as that increases, so does our property tax.
Well, if you, you want to get depressed, you can also think about immigrants too because they're coming too.
Right.
But we, we don't have any control over that right now. But we'll have to provide services to children and families and for them as well. But we don't want to concentrate on that. But basically, I don't know if it's going to, to hit 100%, but it's, it's but it's, it's, the demand is up. Maybe the demand will go down in the near future, but we can't count on that. And it goes up and down in the past, and I presume it will go up and down in the future. But in the meantime, we have to have a semblance of a budget. And that's, that's the problem. And that's why I'm sharing this information with you at the end of April. We could have waited till the end of August or early September when the auditors come. But we have to get a consensus that will do one or the other or another thing to solve the problem. And I wanted to share it with you. As embarrassed as I am, I wanted to share it with the county board.
Thank you.
Thank you. It seems to me that this is going to be an ongoing problem, that it, that there is no real solution to the, to the ongoing problems in the Human Services budget. Because we're constantly faced with challenges that we didn't face a year or two years before. How can you budget for a department like Human Services if we really have no idea how much they're going to spend during any particular fiscal year?
That's a good point. I don't want to have that in it as an excuse, but we have limited, limited choices to spend or not spend the money. So, but that's a good observation. But I think we don't have to be depressed about the future. I think the culture will change because it always does. And in the meantime, we're fending as we can. I don't know if I have a good answer for that, but you could observe that.
Well, it's, it really scares me to know that we have a department that we can't reasonably budget for. Because all of these unknowns that are going to occur as the months and years go by are going, are going to put us further and further in the hole as far as funding for Human Services.
Maybe yes, maybe no. You know, we have big expenses. The Mental Health Institutes at Oshkosh and Madison are more than $1,000 a day, one person.
Yeah.
We had a good experience this year on that particular line item. But we've spent a lot, a lot of money in the past on that, on that program. Group homes, you know, the third page of my document that I hand out lists a lot of the overages in the budget for 2023. And you can see they're all over the place. Group homes, adult homes, group homes for children, et cetera, et cetera. And we just have to get a better handle on the budget right now, and that's my responsibility.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I really don't have a question for Bob. I guess more of a history lesson. And we have, we have a lot of new supervisors here, and it's great. And so far, all the opinions and questions and discussion I heard tonight has been very good and very well received by myself as a veteran of 28 years here. And we have, we have a few supervisors that have been in their late twenties as well. And a lot of people ask me why I wanted to come back. But I feel that a lot of you don't understand that county government is an arm of the state of Wisconsin. As Bob has mentioned many times in any responses, we are mandated by the state of Wisconsin to do certain programs, certain services, and things like that. Human Services, County Clerk's Office, Clerk of Courts, Sheriff's Department, City of the Highway Department, all these departments are all mandated by the state of Wisconsin. And the one thing I find interesting is, and we have a candidate out here for the State Assembly, and I guess I'll just go off on that a little bit too as well. We have a lot of people in local government that get elected to the State Legislature. And they've come from a background and roots like this and know what's going on. But when they get into State Legislature, I guess it changes what party, whether, it doesn't matter what party. It's like you forgot what you learned at the local level that, hey, we're mandating these services to my county, my area, but we don't fund them adequately either. I know this was a mistake, and you can see, but as Bob mentioned, as the county executive mentioned, there are some programs, we have one program that essentially doubled in size last year. But it was, but a lot of those, we used to have Lincoln Hills where we'd budget, you, I guess pretend, I should say pretend, but I'd do a great estimate. And as Supervisor Benke and Supervisor Hanson used to say, we'd spin the wheel. We were on the Human Services Board in the last, in the 2000s. We'd spin the wheel because you never knew exactly what that was going to be, especially Lincoln Hills or the placements, as Bob mentioned, at Mendota, at Madison, and we have a bigger health over in Oshkosh. Those things can destroy a budget, and it has in the past, and it has in the future, potentially in the future. But you do the best you can. But I know, it's frustrating too. When I first followed up with this last week, I'm not going to say, as a Human Services Board chairperson, I was very frustrated too that. And I do think with Supervisor Matthew Phipps, I'm sorry, I think you do have a couple of good ideas. I mean, I would like to eventually, minor in the grand scheme of things. But when I was Finance Committee Chair back early and County Board Chair the first time, I had the Finance Committee have itemized budgets. And granted, I'm not sure that the supervisors would have found this or something like that, but I do think we need to go back to the itemized budgets. I do it at the city council level, and we can bring up line items and more specific numbers instead of just having the numbers like that. But I just want to reiterate once again that county government is mandated by the state of Wisconsin. Just remember that. So, thank you.
As a corollary to that, Jim, when we talk about the sales tax option, we should talk about the 120 days that you have to pass a sales tax if you want to sales tax. So if you want to pass it for January 1st, you have to pass the resolution by September 1st. And that gives you a couple of months to think about which path we're going down. Because if we don't pass the sales tax, and that's fine. In October, we'll talk about the property tax. But the sales tax comes first because of the delay in the, in the law that requires you to have 120 days prior to the tax going into effect.
Thank you, Chairman Martel, and thank you Supervisor Brey. I also share some disdain for the state government and how they forget about the local citizens. But to your point, and this question will be directed to Bob, is that our state has about a $7 billion surplus, Bob. Is there any avenue where the state maybe can work some of that surplus down to... You know, in my prior statements, I was talking about how the lockdowns and the mandates and all that stuff disrupted Human Services Department. So like, the state kind of caused the problem, and it's trickling down to the local level? Is there any recourse we have on the county to maybe try to get some of this, you know, funding or surplus?
I can't blame the state for our problem now. It would be easy to because they have a big surplus. They shared a little bit of that surplus, a very little bit, last year in the shared revenue recalculation. But I just can't blame it on the state because it, we have these requirements and we have to provide the services. The state gives us a pot of money in the Human Services Department. And it was raised a couple of years ago. It could always be raised more. But in the meantime, we have to fend for ourselves, basically.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, there's no option that the state can assist us with any of this more than they already do?
Give me, give me that again.
If I'm understanding you correctly, there's no option where we can appeal to the state to assist us with any of the overages in the Human Services Department?
No, no, no. And the, the reality is that there's two parties, a Democrat and Republican. Republicans control the legislature. The Democrat controls the governor's office. They have to get together and spend that money or not spend that money. And they haven't been able to do that just yet. You could talk on that a lot, but in the meantime, they're not going to bail us out, basically.
Yes, Mr. Ziegler. I was just kind of thinking about everything here, and I just, it just seems like, it just, everything has kind of gone south on us in the last three years. And I just kind of want everybody to kind of think about what actual causes these problems. The inflation, the fentanyl coming across the border. I mean, just try and keep that in mind within the last three years. You know, what has happened to this country? So, and then my other question is, and I brought this up to you one other time. We have two projects that are kind of in mid-phase right now. And is there any way we can either put those on hold to save money? Or use that money, defer that money?
Right.
To take care of part of this problem so we don't have such a tax increase? Either way, property or sales tax?
We can't divert that money to this problem. We borrowed the money specifically for that project, and we can't use it for anything else.
That can't be changed? There's no way?
No. And the Finance Director and the Corporation Council maybe will talk about that more. But basically, no.
No, it's, it is, there is no way, no way to do that under both federal and as well as state law. Okay. You know, it just seems like, you know, we're getting way out in front of our skis here, and it just bothers me. You know, to
I understand.
To try and push a property tax on my constituents, which I know they're not going to understand.
Right.
So, that's it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When we had our meeting and I found out about the deficit, that was really a punch in the gut. It was really surprising that we had such a deficit. But what was interesting is when we really started to examine the budget, we realized that actually it wasn't a cumulative of expenses, not necessarily that it was a single line item that was causing this deficit. And that had me pause a little bit and think in the past, like, how were we as 25 members on the board, we're processing, approving a budget? And I looked back because I know we're going digital, but I'm still analog, so I still have the old budget. And I also remember that going through that budget, I actually spent the time for certain items and earmarked it and set an appointment to meet with you about my concerns about certain things. If I applied that currently, I didn't apply any of that concern with Human Services because I was focused on the committees that I was engaged in. And that kind of reflects for any of the new elected supervisors that it is your responsibility. I mean, it's granted, Bob, it takes responsibility from a management standpoint, but we passed it. We passed this budget unanimously. Nobody was really criticizing any of the aspects of the budget. So before you go forward with your new elected officials, spend some time looking, being critique about some of the items. Spend the time going over the details of this budget because what we're feeling right now is maybe not paying attention to this. When, for public safety, I know, I can't remember when, but we initiated a summary budget that basically highlighted anomalies, anomalies within the departments and stuff that at least gave us a quick snapshot of what was going on. Is that a perfect solution? Is it a systematic approach to avoiding this stuff? Well, it's helpful, but it's hard to predict when, in fact, like, there's a lag between, like in Human Services, if there's a lag with reimbursements happening at such a long period of time. How do you engage some kind of dynamic that's going to meet that? So I do appreciate the fact that this is complicated, but I think we're focused on trying to solve this and mitigate this problem now and then basically stabilizing this going forward, which I think is a sound approach, not necessarily looking for a pound of flesh what went wrong. I mean, our responsibility is to make this work. And right now, we've got an issue. But now, I think solving the issue is our priority to deal with this and being respectful for our constituents. Because yeah, every, somebody's, this is not a fun, fun process. This is actually harming individuals expecting that we're taking care of business. But I got to say, if we're not paying attention to business, well, we should take some responsibility for that too. You can't pass the budget unanimously without any criticism. I mean, you can if you actually done the work. But if you're not doing the work, well, then, pony up. Part of this is my fault.
Well, you make a couple of good points. And I, for, I think I was too aggressive on holding the line on property taxes in the last 18 years. And maybe we, if we would raise it a percent or two each of those 18 years, we wouldn't be in this predicament. And you make a good point about the time lag for the budget process. We start to get the budget finally together in September. And 18 months later, we find out that there's a big problem. 17 months later, we didn't know about it. But in the 18th month, the budget blows up. That's, that's hard, that's hard to manage. And we've got to do better than that, and we'll do better because we have no choice. But in the meantime, the demand for services is rising in these last couple of years. And we got caught. And the, the holding the line on taxes absolutely falls on me too. So, you know.
It's interesting because if we stabilize this, at some point, we might actually have a windfall. Because if the lag for reimbursements happen, we might be in a better, we'll have a good position to have stabilized our deficit and our problem, and then all of a sudden have that windfall coming at us because we're having reimbursements.
And that's a good point because we expect a lot of revenue coming in in 2024 for 2023 expenses. Big revenue, but we can't count on it until they send it, basically. Because they are not Because they are not required to send it exactly, and that's a problem. And in other counties, I've learned that they have a big surplus in the Human Services account just to combat that reality.
So they actually like have a fund balance, basically, as a buffer?
Right, and you could say that's taxing too much. If you want to zero in on the tax levy. So it, but that's how other counties do it.
Maybe one last question. The way I understand it, with the findings with the Supreme Court for Wisconsin with the sales tax application, if we go the route for a sales tax, the notion is that we're applying towards the offset of our property tax. But in regard to this deficit, we would've been doing the same thing, whether it be a property tax. If we use it with a sales tax, we're gonna be doing the same thing, but probably gentler, more so than hitting the property tax thing. Essentially, we will still comply with the state, or with the state Supreme Court's ruling on how counties have to apply their sales tax.
Yeah, I don't think we have a problem with that.
But it will be gentler than if we put out a property tax increase.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Phipps, you'd mentioned other counties and how they budget for some of these expenses that are delayed. We're talking a lot about the challenges that Human Services are facing. Increase in foster care, increase in mental health, opioid abatement. But that's not a problem unique to Manitowoc County. That's everywhere. So my question is, can you speak more specifically to some of the areas that are isolating this problem to Manitowoc County? And why we're experiencing this overage? Or do you have knowledge of other counties that are experiencing similar issues with underpredicting what would've been necessary?
Well, the opioid problem is particularly crucial to Manitowoc County. You remember, six or eight years ago, we had a doctor who was getting in trouble for prescribing opioids a lot. And we are disproportionately affected by the opioid crisis. And that affects Child Protective Services, and you know, it affects the whole family for a long time, and we have to pick it up. But I'm not an expert on the differences from one county to another. You could ask Lori Fury or other people in the Human Services Department to give you a more expert account of the question you're asking.
Sure. And then, could you just maybe explain to us? I know you're monitoring the budget pretty regularly, especially with Human Services, but when you're starting to craft, you know, the annual budget, can you describe what that process looks like?
Well, we work off of the prior budget, and we work off the department director's recommendations. And we've had a pretty good run in 18 years, except for this problem right now. And it works up through the Finance Director's Office and me to make the final adjustments. But it starts with the department directors, and it's working pretty good, except for this calamity.
So, just to be clear, so I know it maybe works differently for other departments, but for the County Board, I receive a worksheet, and I look at last year's numbers, and I anticipate what I might need for next year. Is that similar for other departments?
Yep.
So, when those worksheets were received for Human Services, are we talking that there was an underestimation of the services that would be needed? Or are we, there was an overestimation of the revenues that we would receive? I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around why we're off by such a significant amount. I know inflation can account for some of it, and the opioid problem and the increased need, but...
It's all of that, because we have basically 20 pages, single space, 40 or 50 lines on a page. And it summarizes $32 million or 30-plus million dollars of expenses and revenues. And we go over it, and we ask questions as they come up. But the complexity, especially in funded, unfunded, and sort of funded programs, is a challenge.
And then I just have one last question, and then I'll move on to Supervisor Phipps. You'd made a comment that in the 2024 budget, there was a wrong entry made for $1.5 million. Can you explain what you mean by that?
Well, this program, the expenses have to equal the revenues, because it's totally funded. So if you have $1 million of expenses, you have $1 million of revenue. We have $1 million of expenses and $2.5 million of revenue. That doesn't line up. And whatever we spent, will get reimbursed, but it's $1.5 million apart. So that's where we start out on day one with a billion five deficit in the Human Services budget.
I think I understand, but I just wanted to be clear. So are you saying that there was like a mistype in the budget?
This wasn't mistyped, it was misunderstood, and entered into the department budget, but it was not mistyped, it was misunderstood, and we have the wreckage.
Supervisor Matthew Phipps.
Hi, for all your years on the Board and your efforts to this day. However, I do wanna bring up the point that you said about mandates. One item that I wanna speak about is the expenditures over the budget. And I don't believe a mandate was us expanding our resources to encompass, you know, over $400,000 between the new lease and then just moving expenses, when we should've been accounting for that before we even moved into our new facility. So this seems to me more like a compounding issue within the department. This isn't a delayed funding, which what you were talking about before, about getting paid a few years later for personnel. This is actually compounding issues within the department that have just got out of control, in my opinion.
And in that case, we're going to get the rental money a year late. So we'll get the money for the rental in 2024, but we won't get it in time for its being entered in the 2023 budget. So that's one of the things, one of the revenues that is a year late. It will be there, but it will be a year late. And that's mentioned, because it's a deficit in 2023. But we'll always get it a year late.
Thank you. Makes sense.
Thank you Chairman Martel. I just wanted to be clear about, I think Chairman Martel pretty much brought it up, but you had said earlier in the presentation that there was a defect. And that was the defect that you were just explaining to Tyler. And then one other comment or question, I guess, I would like to make to you. Is there any chance that you think that there was any impropriety or anything like that involved with this whole deal?
No, and the auditors, no, no, no. And the auditors are checking for that every year, and everything is in the right column. We just spent a lot more money than we thought, but it's thoroughly appropriate.
Okay.
Chairman, I really don't have a question for Bob either, I just wanna make a couple comments if I can. Having looked at the numbers that were presented tonight, I guarantee you, none of the constituents in anybody's district is gonna like a 30% increase in taxes. Follow year 3%, so we're like 34%. Sitting in on the committee talking about doing the DOM, we talked about sales taxes, different ways of funding that too. The discussion on the half cent sales tax did come up during that too. At that time, things were decided not to try to do it that way, which is fine. In my estimation, from the numbers I'm seeing, and I know darn well people are not gonna wanna pay 30% more in taxes, I think the half cent sales tax would be the way to do it, to fund this. But if we're gonna do this, we need to do this soon, because there's 120 days like Bob said. And from what I understand, they only do it quarterly type thing, so if we're gonna do it, we should do it. And for one thing, it's gonna help get rid of the problem. The second thing is, there is gonna be a big thing going on in Green Bay next year, and there's gonna be a lot of people coming through our county that are also gonna help pay for that, because it's not just our citizens in our county that are gonna pay this sales tax. Anybody that comes through this county and buys anything that's sales taxed, they're helping pay for it. And there's gonna be a lot of people coming next year for that. And people at Bed and Breakfast, you rent a lot, I'm sure, right? Yes, you do. So there's people that are here that know there's gonna be a lot of people, and you've probably got people asking already. In my estimation, if we're gonna fix this problem, that would be the way to go. So the rest of us on our committee, you guys better start thinking about it, because I think we're gonna have to do that. Thank you.
Nobody left in the queue. Supervisor Metzger.
And we did not have a Human Service Director. We were the only county out of 72 that didn't have one. Well, three budgets we pushed, and pushed for getting a Director. Finally, I was removed, along with two other people, because I think we were a problem. So eventually Patricia Dodge became the Director, and she must've done a wonderful job. But way back before she was, we were always have deficit, a large deficit from Human Services. So now we're saying we didn't have a deficit, and Bob is apologizing, but what about Human Services? I'm wondering, and I don't wanna be mean, but have we checked to make sure that the people there know what they're doing when they're budgeting? Or do we need someone that is more qualified for budgeting? And I guess I feel, before we were said that, it's the supervisor's fault too. I'm sorry, I'm not a Finance Director. I don't think many of us are. So I kinda take offense a little bit, but not bad. I mean, I'm fine. But the other thing is, with the opioid money, it all went to Human Services. None of it went to the Health Department, as far as I know. And I think that was a mistake too. But I think we need to check out to make sure some of these people in these departments are qualified. Not just the Health Department, but all the departments. Make sure they're qualified to do what they're supposed to do. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I just want to thank you for coming and paying attention and asking me challenging questions. And you can stop by my office anytime. Several Supervisors have done that in the last week, and we'll do our job in the future.
There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second, Second Base Supervisor Mink? All those in favor?